I call this meeting to Seymour City Council to order. Could have roll call, please.
Grady Bennett.
Yeah.
Mary Carpenter.
Yes.
Nadine Crisp.
Yes.
Jim Ashley.
Yes.
There is a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to, at this time, ask this young man back over here to tell us how many years he's been in the ministry, please. Mr. Shue, preacher Shue. How many years have you been delivering from the book?
Sixty years.
Sixty years. And I'd like to ask him here tonight to lead us in a prayer, if you would.
Be my joy indeed. Thank you. Father, as we humble ourselves before you and ask for your presence in our hearts and lives, test us as to whether we love you and love each other. Speak to us so that we might speak for you with honesty and integrity. Help us to listen one to another. Grant that as far as possible we might understand each other. Help us together to do for the best of our community and our fellow citizens. Oh, Father, we pray for each other. A lot of things have to be presented today and talked about. I pray that some of them can be finalized and settled. We ask again for your touch. Help us to love one another in that deeper sense. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you would, face the flag. Behind me, repeat with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item up, I turn your attention to item number four on your agenda, old business. And in that vein, the approval of the minutes. Has every council member had the opportunity to review the minutes that are presented?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented. Something I need to correct.
We have, okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that? Okay, now then, we can clarify if the additions or deletions.
Okay, it says, "Automated Nadine Crisp ran into a former employee at the grocery store." Employee, the former employee told the recent employees worked for him because of the illegal law. That employee is an employee.
The employee is employed.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so did it say former employee?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is that?
Then we need to strike that and add that this was not a former employee but a present employee. Any other additions or deletions? I have one down on the second page where it says, "Mary Larry Chafin." That's not my formal name.
No, it's not.
So I'd like to have that either Mayor Larry Chafin or something else, if you would.
Sorry, I missed that.
Well, I thought it was a little bit humorous, that's why I pointed it out.
Thank you.
I think it has a ring to it.
Yes, it does.
Avert it with the changes.
Very good, very good. It's a good old Irish name, Mary, according to Mr. Cohen. Okay, any other additions or deletions? We have a motion on the floor in a second. Then, all those in favors accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we'll start out with new business approval of the bills. You should have a copy of all the checks that have been issued for payment. And do you have any questions about any of the amounts or any of the names to who the payee is?
I've got employees' insurance, twenty-one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Is that two weeks or no?
It'd be a month. Who's the vendor?
I don't know. It just says employees' insurance.
Twenty-one hundred?
Twenty-one hundred.
What page?
First page.
Insurance by employees, maybe?
Well, I see twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one seventy-six, actually.
Oh, that's, that is, that's for electric. Is it just one line item right here?
It says employees' insurance.
Yeah. So that, if you look, that's anthill, cross blue shield. That's our insurance carrier, health insurance, and it's broke out by department.
Oh, that's a whole department?
Yeah, yeah, that's electric. Oh, five is electric. So their total bill is fifty-seven thirteen. If you look on down, just a little ways, it's invoice total, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
How many's in that department?
Um, probably four. Four would be the Lance Mitch, Lisa, Shelly.
How many's in the seven?
That's Sewer, and that's gonna be John and, um, yeah.
Roger.
One, I make Lance Vegas. Has he been to a seminar or something?
He went to a school down in Arkansas for his apprentice, his lineman apprentice. I don't know what the subject is on.
And he was at the meeting two days. Any other questions about the bills that are presented to you? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the bills as presented.
I make the motion to accept the bills as presented.
You have a motion on the floor to accept the bills as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to give further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the bills as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on into the conceal and carry ordinance. Here is legislative review in its purest form. So, Mr. Link, would you like to?
Yeah, I could present it if you want.
If you would, please.
This was brought up at the last council meeting about our ordinances not being necessarily in compliance with the changes in state law on conceal and carry. So specifically, the ordinance for a city of Seymour is two-ten point eight-four-zero. And so what I've done is, what you have in front of you, you'll see the strike-throughs of things I've taken out, and then the bold is what's been added. Specifically, why I thought, think it's a good idea is, in Section A, you'll see, we put, tied it to Section five-seventy-one point one-oh-one through five-seventy-one one-twenty-one of state statutes. Reason why that's good is, over time, the Jeff City tends to tweak their legislation a lot. And so by tying all ordinance to the conceal and carry state statutes, then if the state slightly tweaks what they allow, then it automatically would change what's done here without us having to constantly be monitoring it and then changing our ordinances in conjunction with that. I will say, if this passes tonight, I would ask Leslie to, it looks like between my typing on my end and your printing at your end, the, some of the bold bled close to the existing words where there's like not spacing between things. So I wouldn't, don't want to have it sent to a code company to be put in the, formalized in our book with, with it looking like there's words running together. So if you'll just kind of check that before it gets formally sent into a code company to make sure we don't have words look like they're on top of each other in there.
Mr. Link, on the second page, it says possesses a firearm while also knowingly in possession of controlled substance.
That was already in our code book.
Yeah. That it is sufficient for felony violation. What if that would say any violation? Does that just mean a felony violation?
Well, generally, the only time that comes up is if somebody has a controlled substance of a felony amount is when that would come in. What, reason why that's in there is if our officers pull over somebody and they have an amount too much, I don't even know what the, it's pretty low level now that it becomes a felony amount, they would also get nailed for a conceal and carried where when they send it, I assume, to the county because it'd be a felony charge. There would be a double violation of not only the felony drug possession and probably a felony drug paraphernalia possession, but also, in this case, a felony possession of a weapon. So it just adds to the charges that the county could levy, or in this case, it'd be the state via the county.
That answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Then on revisions, we read the ordinance, is that the way?
You guys ready then?
I actually developed some concern, and I wasn't able to communicate that well over the last week because I've been without a phone. Sam had kind of answered some of the questions through a response from Missouri Municipal League, but do we know, do we know what other cities are doing in regard to this?
I've looked around, and most cities are doing the exact same thing because it's, I mean, it's state law, and so they're basically getting in line and tweaking their conceal carry ordinances to reflect that.
I just noticed on, and I don't, I don't know all the details of, of the sources for the image, but there's an image with a graph, if you will, or a table showing concealed carry versus permitless. And one of the things that's listed on there for open carry is that it's prohibited and less prohibited by the municipality in which you're in, I believe is how it was worded. I can't, I can't get my computer to cooperate, but are people or municipals choosing to disallow the open carry still?
I honestly haven't seen that. I will tell you that from my experience in some other cities, there are some cities that, the way they handle their codes is they have a contract with a code company that puts out their code book, that the code company, once a year, goes through all their codes and makes changes to comply with state law. And honestly, the, there's a lot of cities that are getting the code changed to this law here, and they don't, probably don't even know that it's being changed. In other words, the code company just sends it to them and says, here's the twenty-five ordinances that need to be changed this year based on what's happened in Jeff City, and they pass them all blanketly, and then it becomes the code in their city. But, Grady, I honestly don't know if there's any cities that, I think what you're asking is if they're exempting out of the state law some way to where they don't allow conceal and carry in their state or in their city.
Well, it's, it's actually, it's actually, just the comparison is permitless concealed carry versus permitted concealed carry.
Right.
And in regards to open carry, under concealed carry with the permit, it shows that it would be a legal choice, but with the permitless, it says that it's legal but only allowed in municipalities in which open carry is not prohibited. So that, that tells me that there's provisions that you can still prohibit open carry if you desire, right?
That's, if what you're saying is actually what the law is, I would say that that would be a provision. I don't know not to use a Trump thing, but I don't know if that's fake news or if that's a real state statute as far as whether or not it's allowed.
It was, I didn't track it down, but I believe it could be a reputable source. I just, I just wonder, there's concern on my part if we, if we do, and I don't want to be any more strenuous than what state statutes would be on gun laws, but are we gonna create a situation where people who currently cannot legally open carry a firearm because they can't pass the background for the CCW permit, now we change this ordinance, will they now be?
The intention would be, by tying it to the five-seventy, chapter five-seventy-one of state statutes, would be that if the, in essence, if the state allows somebody to do it, then it'll be allowed.
But they would, they would still have to meet the requirements.
That was required by the state.
So we're saying that we need to be as restrictive as the state in this instance?
I have a few concerns.
That's what we're doing with the statute. Any further questions?
I think he has something, sure.
Yes, we recognize that gentleman in the.
You try to confuse the municipality itself, not individual businesses within the municipalities. Like some businesses have restrictions, guns can't be run into that business.
That's their problem.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's correct.
And that's common anywhere, that you'll have a sign on their door that says you can't bring them in here.
Good point. Thank you for pointing that out. We have another comment.
Mr., I read about this in the paper and found it quite alarming.
Tell, tell us who you are, please.
My name is Terry Kelly, home in Circle Kate Trading, folks over there on the square.
Very good.
Yeah. I'm prior law enforcement, since graduating academy back in the mid-eighties, I've been carrying ever since. I'm pro-Second Amendment this anymore. It really concerns me, the thought of this becoming an okay morale and people who are untrained and unvetted walking around town packing guns. Now, the attorney referenced the intent of this ordinance. Sometimes things have unintended consequences. When we do this, not only does this apply to the people on the north side of town, where apparently all the bloods and crypts have been made to be, you know, some crime capital, but it will also apply to any Tom, Dick, and Harry passing through this town. And it's very concerning. I think it would be a great idea if the city allowed open carry for anybody who had a permit. But in order to get a permit, number one, you have to demonstrate to the state of Missouri that you can safely handle a firearm, that you understand the laws pertaining to that, and then you also pass a background check. And I understand, you know, people may want to do everything like the state, but the state will do everything right. They had been doing everything right with this up until they changed this. The guy that introduced this bill in the legislature, a personal friend of mine, and I told him, Eric, you're making a huge mistake here, you know, because these guys are libertarians and, you know, almost anti-government, not even limited government rather than no government because sometimes we got to do things to protect the public. But I believe this will have unintended consequences. It would be almost right saying, okay, now that you're sixteen years old, you have a right to drive a car. You no longer have to take a driving test, you no longer have to have a driver's license if you're sixteen to get in the car and head on down the road. Would that make you feel uncomfortable?
Oh, boy.
This is the same thing. This is the same thing. And I'm perfectly fine with people carrying concealed weapons. At high level, from the front door to my store, it says licensed CCW, welcome. So I'm not anti-gun. I probably, I guarantee I've got more guns in this department, so I got more ammunition than most of the chemists have, okay? I'm very pro-gun, but I'm going to them responsibly. And I think this would be very irresponsible. If somebody wants to carry a gun, I'm fine with that, but get a permit so that we know that you have had at least, you know, some training and that you've been vetted to the point that we know that you don't have an export pay order or been restricted of investing violence, or that you haven't been adjudicated mentally ill, I mean, just scared if you think about how this could turn out. So there's no requirement that the city of Seymour's ordinances have to match the state statutes. You guys have the authority to go over and above that, is that not correct?
I'll have to look on the particular gun laws. I mean, generally speaking, cities want to be in compliance with the state statutes. I mean, I'm with you that the states, the state statutes changed and made them a very liberal one.
Missouri decided that, okay, we're gonna change our sodomy laws or our statutory rape laws where as long as the little girl's ten years old, she's fair game, being fifteen, then would the city of Seymour say, okay, we think it's okay, you know, for men to be with ten-year-old little girls? I mean, the state makes mistakes sometimes. And so just because the, our state legislature maybe was reckless in this, that doesn't mean the city.
I, I agree. I guess by the same analogy, everybody can get their driver's license at sixteen, but I mean, under that, but I, what I'm getting at is, you wouldn't want Seymour to say, well, everybody in Seymour has to be twenty. I mean, it's just.
It'd be a violation of state law.
Also, the state of Missouri says you have to, I show the state of Missouri that you can safely operate a motor vehicle, and you have to have a license.
Sure.
Sir, I agree with your statement that that also applies to every Tom, Dick, and Harry that comes into town. It applies to them too. But every Tom, Dick, and Harry that comes into town that wants a gun already has one.
But that, then they're.
I mean, they're, and it's in, and it's in violation.
Officers have a report, you know, to deal with that. I deal with some of the shady.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
And I'm telling you, people walk in my door, I look for something called printing. Officer here knows that, you know, if you look and see that, you see some bulging in the, but we're not printing, but it's a, it's a flashlight. And so, you know, I have to be conscious of that all the time. I make cash loans, and so I have to, and I buy gold and silver so I can keep cash on me. And so I have to be, this.
Oh, I understand completely.
This is just to think any Tom, Dick, and Harry with zero training, okay? And there, you know, how many of us, you know, had army basic training decades ago? They call it basic training for a reason, and that's basic combat training, and that has nothing to do with what we deal with on the street.
But my point is that these ordinances that we're passing is for law-abiding citizens. That's what this is for. And the people, the kind of people that you're talking about, if they want a gun, they've already got one. But here's a question I might ask.
What, what it does is it makes it illegal for them to have one.
Right.
Most, most, you, you can, it's unfortunate, but you can stand on the sidewalk and probably every fifth or sixth car you could count that probably has illegal narcotics in it. And that's illegal. We shouldn't make it legal just because they're gonna have the narcotics whenever we allow or disallow.
But those narcotics are illegal for everybody, and these guns aren't.
Can, can we put in this ordinance that they would have to have a permit to carry?
I'm sure we can, we can, we don't have to even change it, or we can be out of compliance with state law. I was just given the charge of making the ordinance comply with state law.
Well, I want to be in compliance with the state laws, you know.
Is, could you explain the appropriate term? I mean, compliance means do, to do what you're supposed to do.
I am with you, and I'm not a gun person. I don't own a gun. I'm not advocating this at all. All I'm doing is, last meeting, I was told to bring this in compliance with state law.
Is, is compliance, the, and compliance would imply that it's necessary?
Could I pose a question to you? You said that you were in law enforcement for a time.
Yes.
If you wore a badge tonight in the Seymour and you swore to uphold the law and the Constitution of the state of Missouri, and this is state law.
Right.
You're saying that you would not uphold that as a fire, as a policeman?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
No, no, when you take that, when you take an oath, you abide by the oath.
Right, exactly.
I got a good friend that's a circuit judge, and I've gone to dinner with him, and he told me, he said, man, I made a ruling today that was wrong, but he said it was the law.
Yes.
And so I did something that I knew was wrong.
And sometimes we have to do things that we disagree with, and I think that's what we're saying here. The city just wants to make sure that we're in compliance with state law.
Compliance isn't, I think, is an inappropriate term.
I agree.
The, here's, here's how it unfolded. It wasn't, it wasn't a request that we comply or mirror state statute. The request was that we no longer required a CCW to carry openly because currently you have to have a concealed carry weapon permit to carry openly.
According to city ordinance of present time.
And, and so if somebody wants to carry openly, go, go get vetted. Show the state of Missouri, hey, I have the appropriate training, go ahead and take your fingerprints and, and run me through the FBI, and then, Missouri is a shall-issue state. Now, for example, California, you can apply, people say we can't get concealed weapons permit in California. Well, that's true, and it's not. They do have a concealed weapons law there, but what it is, is a may-issue state. So the sheriff gets to decide if you have one or not, and if you're his fishing buddy, he can write you a permit, and if he doesn't know, you don't get one. In Missouri, it says, if you qualify, the sheriff shall issue you a permit. And so I have no issue with anyone who qualifies having a permit and being able to carry openly or concealed here, okay? But just say, okay, now every Tom, Dick, and Harry can stick a gun on their hip, and I don't know that that person's been vetted. I don't know if they got beaten, beating their wife, or if they're, you know, have mental issues or whatever. And so this just, I think, protects the citizen by saying, okay, we're okay with you, with you packing a gun, but we want you to get checked out.
Well, I, I.
And this was brought to our attention, that our city ordinance currently requires you to have a CCW to open carry. It's assumed that the individual wanted to open carry without holding a CCW permit. Otherwise, it would have been brought to our attention.
The only reason not to get a CCW permit is if you think that you don't qualify for some reason or another.
I would agree to that.
Or if you're paranoid and don't want your government.
I guess I thought that when we changed this ordinance, it would, they would still be required to have a permit to carry.
You do have, you will be required to have a permit if you have, if you have a firearm.
Not in state of Missouri.
Did they not change that? Okay. Okay, we appreciate your, your comments, but we've got another, another gentleman needs to come forward and express his views. Would you come forward, please?
If I can finish the statement, I've started numerous times.
You may, Mr. Bennett.
The, the.
I know, a lot of the.
Just, Mr. Bennett's got to finish his statement.
Let him finish first.
This conversation didn't derive from a need to mirror the state statute. It derived from a request to lift the requirement to have a CCW so that one could open carry without possessing said permit. It was my suggestion that we mirrored the state statute. That's where all that came from, was, was me and my recommendation, and I think I made that ignorant.
But.
I want to back up on that.
But I think they, they still need to qualify.
Yes, I, I do. I think there's, I think there's provisions there, in language there, that alludes to us having the ability to still require the CCW to open carry.
Right.
Open carry could be completely lawful as long as you possess the CCW and you've proven yourself that you can.
Right.
So partially, partially, I was a little ignorant and gung-ho, if you will, to jump into this and mirror the state statute.
We all were, we all were.
Clifford, sorry.
Now, a lot of these concealed instructors aren't even qualified to train. A lot of them, I know somebody got CD, those cars right now, can't hit six feet.
You have to.
They get the cars right out. I mean, I can take no names.
I got five.
But I don't want to get a CD car to carry. I don't think I need to pay for one. Because they, they should, gotta have one. I'm qualified, I can get one. Run a deal on me, you'll find out, we all agree.
So why don't you get a consent carry then?
The, the state says, the state says that you can open carry as long as it's not prohibited in a municipality.
And that means.
Well, that would seem to be contradictory to state law, Mr. Bennett, but I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. And our attorney says that, you know, that this will bring us up to compliance with state law. True, we may not all agree with what the law says.
I think you can work on this for the next six months, and you won't have an ordinance that pleases everybody.
No.
Correct.
But couldn't we add where they would have to have a permit?
We, we could add that, Councilman Carpenter, but we might be in violation of state law.
It's a catch-22 situation.
Well, we have, we have an ordinance on the books that we, that has been pointed out to. Well, we have, uh, we have an ordinance on the books that we, uh, that has been pointed out to us as antiquated by state law. And our legal counsel has pointed out in his summary, uh, and revision of this ordinance, uh, before us. Now, with that being said, I suppose we could, uh, adopt any policy that we needed to, but we might not be in compliance with state law. And our legal counsel has told us that this is the instrument that will cause it to be in compliance.
I was just saying, I, it, it does mirror state law. If you want, if you're wanting something like with a permit, I mean, we can look and see if there's a way to do that. But I, we, we couldn't change that on the floor tonight, 'cause it's already on the floor.
Right, right.
I mean, it would, it would require postponing a vote and then bringing it back in two weeks to see if there's a way to make it a, a permit thing. I, I said, I'm not advocating either way, I just was put it in compliance with state law.
Right, right.
Correct. And that's all, that we, we can't answer anything more. You've done, you've done what we asked you to do.
Missouri is a shall-issue state for concealed carry. Permitless carry took effect on January first, two thousand seventeen. Open carry is permitted. Local governments are allowed to regulate open carry and the discharge of firearms, except in self-defense. However, CCW permit holders are exempt from ordinances banning open carry. Missouri state law allows the municipality to regulate open carry with the exemption of CCW holders.
Over the state law is the Federal Firearms and Tobacco Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Which I have a copy, I get one every year, 'cause my husband bought and sold guns under the federal firearms and tobacco law. And you, I don't think that the city wants to overs, do the federal or the state?
Well, that's what we're here to, to see, um, if indeed we wish to do that, or if we wish to pass something that would, uh.
This, this would not be overstepping the state, as there's, uh, as there's provisions in that law to allow a city to regulate open carry. So, so they've, they've put that into the law, so it wouldn't be overstepping them. That's their language, not mine.
Yes.
And regards to what, he was saying, I understand what you're talking about. You got people coming in and out of town, uh, various, uh, illegal organizations. At the same time, I'm also looking at the person who is just traveling through town. How would that affect them? Because if you're coming from outside the city limits, statewide, you can legally have that gun in open. But it becomes, that city limits, all of a sudden, I just popped in, get some gas, or stuff in McDonald's or Casey's or something. Now, I'm against the city ordinance.
Within the, that's something called the, called the.
Peaceful Journey Act.
Peaceful Journey Act.
It, it permits that peaceful journey. See, state, state laws differ. Illinois is a whole different critter when it comes to gun laws. There's, there's an act, Peaceful Journey Act, and it, it allows you, if you're traveling, you can lawfully carry a weapon irregardless of what, as long as you legally can. Irregardless of what that state law depicts, because you're guaranteed the right to peaceful journey to and from.
All right.
The line between peaceful journey and what he was talking about, who are coming from and out of?
Well, I would view that i- in the same sense. When you enter into the state of Arkansas, uh, if you're traveling, even though you've come from Missouri, when you enter into the state of Arkansas, you're expected to abide by Arkansas's laws. And that would be due diligence of somebody if, if it came down to it, when they enter into the city of Seymour, they're expected to abide by Seymour's laws to the best of their knowledge, I would think.
Mr. Keeling, if you had anything further, then I'm gonna wrap this up and ask for a motion on this, uh, revised ordinance. So, uh, we've, we've exhausted this pretty much and heard from our citizens about this and heard from our city council. There seemed to be some discontent with what is before us. So, the chair would listen to a motion regarding the revision of this city ordinance.
I'd like a motion to table the matter.
One second.
Do you wanna put a time date on that?
Um, I don't care to.
Couple of weeks.
Uh, yeah, the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay, then this will be resumed. Is there any further advice in your motion to, uh, our city attorney?
I, I think that this would, this would not be, if you wanna use the word compliance or mirror, this would still mirror the state statute or state law, as they're the ones that put the provision in there that the local government can regulate open carry. So, it would not be in opposition or against what the.
What statute are you reading from, reading?
I will, I'll have to find that, I'll email it to you.
Okay.
If, uh.
Five seventy-one point zero seven zero, maybe it.
Very good, and.
I'll email it to you.
Since, uh, Mr. Link is our legal counsel, uh, we would refer that issue to him then to review that further. And we'll review this again in two weeks. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. That's, uh, that's what we'll do then. Mr. Link, review that section which Mr. Bennett has a concern, and then we'll take it up again at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing up on your agenda, if you look, is the utility commission appointments. The mayor has some names to present to you, and then we can discuss.
Should these appointments be done in open?
They can be.
You know, I, I don't see why we couldn't, I, we're not doing anything but talking about.
If we put somebody on the volunteer fire department, we do it in closed.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I guess the potential could be, there could be some discussion, uh, that comes about that could be quite personal, I don't know. But it's not employment either, so.
Yeah, it's not required to go in closed.
The, the, the fire department are considered employees.
Yeah, it is, it'd be hard to qualify this as personnel when they're not getting any money from the city.
Exactly.
It's, it's a board that works.
How do we handle the library appointments, openly or in closed?
Open.
Openly?
Uh, you know, the chair is not, uh, predisposed either way, Councilman Carpenter, I mean, Ashley.
You.
So, uh, so if, uh, it, it's just up on the agenda this evening. If you wish to do that in closed session, then we would have to put this off till next meeting, because, uh, it's not on the agenda for this evening.
I think, I think the fact that you have personnel on the agenda in executive session would cover that if you deemed that this is a personnel issue, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with doing it in open.
I'm not predisposed either way, Councilman Bennett.
I personally think it should be done in closed, but whatever everybody thinks.
I'm pretty indifferent, I don't feel strongly on the other.
It doesn't matter.
Well, maybe we need a roll call and see, see where we stand here. All those in favor, I'm gonna ask for a roll call, in favor of, uh, listening to the appointments tonight and visiting that. Do so by saying, uh, you affirm that, and could have a roll call, please.
And what is this for?
The biggest, the biggest question would be.
To discuss the appointments tonight.
Would be closed, uh.
In open.
In open, that's right.
Is it even, I mean, is it cutting rail or advise us on?
I mean, I, what I, my struggle is whether or not these, these commission appointees would ever qualify as city personnel, to even qualify to be talked about in closed session.
Well, the vol- it's the volunteer fire department, you know, they're volunteers.
Yeah, exactly.
They, they do fill out an application and get paid per response.
They get gas money.
Yeah.
Yeah, not even gas money.
Whatever, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm, that'd be fine.
Well, it, it, the chair, the chair just requesting your, your, uh, your take on this thing. All those, uh, that are in favor of, uh, listening to appointments tonight, I guess, affirm in, uh, in a roll call vote. And, and we'll, uh, take the opposing side the same way.
Great, Bennett.
I guess, I guess the, uh, context of the question, I'm, I'm not clear on. Yes means open, or yes means closed?
Yes means open, that would make great.
That's fine.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Maybe Chris?
Yes.
Jim Ashley?
Well, I reckon. It don't matter.
Uh, well, we, we have one in opposition, I just.
No, no, that's fine, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it.
You're, you're going.
I, I didn't make a motion, I just.
It's unanimous, it's unanimous then. All right, let me, let me just start with my, my list here, and this is by no means, uh, the, the all-encompassing, it's just, uh, the names that I would present to you tonight. Vernon Copeland. And these names, I have not approached all these folks to see if they would be willing to serve in that capacity.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate before we voted on them.
Well, if, if, if there's opposition in, uh, some area of opposition, then I think you could voice that tonight, Mr. Bennett.
Okay.
Uh, if not, while we can approach these people, if they are, uh, consenters to, uh, to serve on this board, then, then I would bring that back to you and say that they are appointed.
Okay.
So, the first one I'll throw out to you then is Vernon Copeland.
Do we vote on it, or?
Well, it's just, yes, we'll vote on each one, I suppose.
Can we hear the proposals entirely before we start basing?
Oh, you want, you want all the names read? I have five, since this was to be a, a five-member board. Uh, Vernon Copeland, and he, he's a retired gentleman. Sheila Sturven, of course, most of us know Sheila, she's president of Seymour Development Association, retired US Postal Service. Lisa Owens is formerly a city, uh, employee in South Ward Alderman. She now works at O'Reilly Hotel Management in Springfield. I thought Dan Weimer might be a good one to have on that committee, since he has done that before. He has, uh, a publishing company called Tiger Media LLC. Also, he owns and operates a paper, as we all know, that's a has since nineteen sixty-six. Uh, Monte, um, Kaltis, yes, former city employee and works at Seymour Building Supply. So, those are the five that I would present to you tonight.
Could I, could I ask, um, in this, in a question based on the names, it's, it's, I guess I just thought that that would be the case. Should we not make it known that we're seeking people to serve in this capacity? Uh, there might be a, a great deal of qualified people that would be interested. Rather than, we're, we're picking names on a list here that was not even approached to see if they're interested, when there very well may be somebody out there that's quite interested and, and just unaware of our.
There may very well be, uh, Councilman Bennett, uh, following city ordinance, uh, the appointments are to be made by the mayor and approved by the council. So, here are five names for your consideration. If you don't agree with those names, then of course you could ask for others, and we might, uh, insert an ad in the paper to, uh, to glean more names.
Can we get anyone that's, as long as they got a business that lives out of town?
No.
I, I think that, uh, that this commission, uh, Councilman Chris has to be, uh, from inside the incorporated city limits.
I think, I think we have some work to do on the commission before we put anybody on it. There's a lot of questions that haven't been answered. Is the commission gonna have officers? Do they vote themselves officers? Do we vote them as we put them in? Who does the commission answer to? Do they answer to the board? Does the mayor sit on the commission? Will we have, uh, aldermen that sit on the commission to represent the city? Is the decisions they make binding? Do we approve them? I mean, the questions can go all in on. We need to define our commission before we start putting people on it, because otherwise, you're just turning them loose.
We can more clearly define that, I think it's pretty, uh, straightforward.
You see, you see what I'm saying?
What the commission is to do, yes, I, I understand that. And I have had some thoughts about that too, Jim.
The objective is pretty straightforward, but there's.
But the details can go on and on.
The framework within that, uh, we, we can, uh, we can build some framework into it, we can. Uh, you know, we've got five, five-member board. Uh, I think what puts them in, keeps them in, uh, they move out of the city, of course, they would be taken off, and other appointees would be considered. Is it a paid board? I would say, no, it's, it's an all-volunteer board. And that's, that's the chair's take on this. But, uh, yes, there should, there could be some framework put into that, and.
I would think the terms would be appropriate. We have terms on even the park board, and I'm not belittling the park board, but the park board is a complete different animal compared to a utility board. And if somebody sees it fit that we need terms on a park board, I think that it would be fit that we would need terms on a commission for the utility board as well.
Well, I'll take it, Mr. Bennett.
And the appointments on this, this isn't like the park board. There's, you're really gonna have to, some people that's gonna have to do some work on here.
Exactly.
I mean, they're gonna have to be, and I'm not saying that the park board's not dedicated, but you.
I have a question. Is there anyone here remembers when we had a utility board?
I know we used to have one, but no, I don't remember.
I did figure there was. Yes, they have been, it's made up of mostly merchants in the town of Seymour. And the reason it dissolved was because they made really good decisions. They all made the decision to buy a gun, which kept, has kept the city going forever. The reason it resolved was the council would override them on what they suggested that we do. So, it resolved because of that.
Well.
I'm not saying, I'm not for it or against it, I'm just telling you.
That, that's exactly right, you know, and I've heard people say, well, I'm not interested in doing anything, uh, because you never get anything, everything you suggest gets, gets negated. So, uh, so I do think that we need to build some, uh, issues into this board that would say that they have the right to set rates, because that's what it's about.
I think if you do it for the board, they also live in the city limits.
Yes, yes.
They pay electric, water, and fuel. There is some people that are in the city limits that pay electricity to Seymour.
Yes, there are.
So, I think they need to pay utilities, all of them need utilities in the city.
So, so not only a resident of the city, but a member of the utilities?
Yes.
In totality.
And I think the ones that were.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Bennett, of course, he works for Seymour, but he also has power and stuff. So, that might have been what you were referring to. But anyway, uh, and I think that's, that's a good suggestion, I think it is.
Lord. When, when was that? When did we have the commission? I, I've wondered several times, when and who was on the board that decided that we had our own electricity company? Oh, no, it was way before that, way before that. In the fifties?
Dean was on the, um.
Bennett, maybe I don't have a pool of ten to pick from, or eight, or, you don't even, you don't even have any options. I'm not saying these people aren't options, I'm just saying that even our alderman races are contested.
In the city. Okay, there's probably some records that.
And I'm not, uh, the negative on, on city employees either, but.
Yeah.
What I would suggest then is that.
I don't think any of them have.
Director attention back to, uh.
He's just presenting the names.
Back to the issue at hand. Back to the issue at hand, and if we are going to, uh, also table this until we can put some more structure in this, uh, then the chair would entertain a motion for that. These names are out there to you. Uh, we, we don't have to visit these names tonight if you don't want to.
All right, I've got a suggestion. Could we have?
Yes, Councilman Chris.
Could we have at least ten, ten names to pick from?
We certainly may.
Yeah, and that way.
These are just the first five.
Yeah, well, that would give us more.
By no means inclusive, correct.
And, and honestly, I do think they need to maybe have some kind of business or kind of business-related people.
Well, you could, Jim, Jim's point on, trying to get more clarification on what this commission looks like, I think, I think one, the, the terms would be determined. I think the, the authority that they have needs to be determined.
Yes.
I think that, uh, the, the way it's comprised, do you want to require at least two of them to be business owners? Do you want to require three of them to be business owners? You need resident representation too, because their utilities are two different critters.
Yeah.
So you wanna, you wanna, we need to spell those things out, and then when you go to these people and approach them, they'll know what they're coming into, and you won't get that, no, I'm not gonna do it, because they're just gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna understand what, what their authority and what their position is and what their expectations are.
That's what we need to clarify, and I, I think if I was gonna be asked to do that, I would also wanna know.
Yes.
My, my, my boundaries.
Yes.
And if I did all this work for you and produced spreadsheets to you, and then you said, well, we're not gonna do that, but they need to have some authority to do what they do. And so based on what the information that we've seen, here's our recommendation to you, here's what the utility rates are gonna be.
But by, by doing this, we have to prepare ourselves, because there's gonna be people that saying, the board of aldermen are just shirking their responsibilities, and that, and that's coming, because we're gonna say this, and we're gonna push this off on, on a commission.
Is that what they said when they had it before?
I, I think.
I don't know, that was before, way before my time.
I think we can't give them control to set the rate, because they're not the ones that's making the ends meet on a budget here. They control the rate, they are self-interested, because they're the ones paying the bills. My profit margins are getting tighter and tighter, the only way I can increase my profit margins is to reduce my overhead, so I'm gonna vote as a commission to, to mandate the aldermen to lower these rates, and then the aldermen can decide where they wanna cut the money, because that's not my problem. I, I think.
Well, ultimately, these, these folks answer to the city council. But it is clear tonight that we need to revisit this, to draft a, uh, a set of rules and regulations, to build some structure into this. And I suppose we could either look at what other municipalities have done in reference to this board, and, um, I guess Sam, if you could maybe get something for us, uh, you know, that, what was the fellow's name that was here, Noel?
Yule.
Yule, Yule. Uh, if you could contact possible Yule and say, we, we need some clarification, can you give us a track to run on? Could you, could you do that by our next meeting?
Some guidelines, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
May I add something?
Yes, you may.
I think Jim's exactly right, that when it comes to setting rates, I think the people need to be elected rather than appointed, because that's what the citizens want to. That's just my opinion. But, uh, to add to what you just said, uh, I think I, maybe with some help, can go back and look at what's in place for the board that existed way back, and, uh, as well as what's in place today in different places in comparison to.
Might save a lot of work to get a good basis.
What year was that? The fifties? Do we, we have records that can point that forward?
I don't know, I mean, no, I wouldn't be able to find them.
Leslie, Marion and I was on the board before, wasn't Jerry Clyer and Lee Benley on some kind of a board?
They were, but this, that was, that was, that was a different, that was a different animal.
No, it's something different. I don't remember either.
That probably would have been.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Uh, when Show Me was, was kicking us off the art program and they're seeking a new power supply.
That could be it, that could be it.
We should call the guys, the guys, and say, send us some drafts.
Okay.
They're.
I can do that.
God forbid it come up, but you know it will, there needs to be bylaws in there that spells that stuff out. If somebody should move out of the city limits, their position terminates immediately, things like that, because those, those bills will come up.
I agree. So we'll do that, if Sam can get us something by the next meeting. If, uh, you wanna put this off till next meeting, we'll put that, uh, you know, these five names, like I say, are not all-inclusive. We, we may need to place an ad in the paper, uh, to say if you're interested in serving on a public utility board, to, uh, to, uh, set the rates for the city, uh, then apply to the city, and then I would present those names to you as they come.
This may be silly, but maybe even include, uh, payment history. We, I, I don't think it would be real responsible to put people into position of commission if they don't even pay their, their bill in the time they're in.
That would be, and I've read that in some of our ordinances too, that, that, so that would be something that we'd need to say, that they need to be prudent about their, uh, payment of their bills.
I would like to have a little more time, two weeks.
I will retract that.
What would be your pleasure on that, Sam?
I mean, 'cause I've got a lot on my plate, a, a month would probably be more reasonable for me, or two meetings away. I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
First meeting December.
It would be a little more appropriate for me, I think.
That will be, uh.
First meeting December would be.
First play.
December what?
I'm gonna let it wind it up.
Be about the twenty-third, no, that's.
No, we'll just have, we'll just have one meeting in November.
December.
Oh, December.
Oh, yeah, because of Thanksgiving.
December the fourteenth, then. And, uh, we'll see what Sam can come up with, and then we'll review that, and maybe that'll be just the tool that we need to get us on our way.
Good day.
We need a motion now.
In the meantime, it, well, we, did you make a motion?
Well, I don't, I don't even think it's necessary, we're not expected to.
No.
We're just tabling it.
Well, it's, we're gonna table it until December the fourteenth. Very good. I probably need a motion about putting the ad in the paper.
Yeah, oh, oh, so.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in second, that we'll put an ad in the paper to, to suggest that those that are interested in serving on a utility commission. So all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Pose same sign. Motion. So, uh, Sam, I'm, I'm looking at you again. Uh, can you draft us a, an ad for, for the paper that, that says something like that? If you're interested in serving on the commission, uh, apply to the city.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll work with Sam a little bit, there, I, it dawned on me, and it very well might be no records back this far, but the old utility commission very well might have incorporated themselves with the state of Missouri in some sort of form or fashion, and if that's the case, their records as to how they formed and all that kind of stuff could be in some archive with the Secretary of State's office, so I can, I'll work with Sam and see if there's some way we can find those from a, like I said, they probably didn't have to record it, but back then they might have taken all their documents to the Secretary of State and recorded them.
Very good, I think we'll spring to the city that has the utility commission, so if, uh.
Well, you could look at the investor, and I know it's complete different animals, but the investor owns are regulated by a utility commission, so there'll be a lot of, uh, information within those structures that you might build the pool from.
So the.
Empire and.
We have, uh, an ad that's gonna be put in the paper in reference to this, we'll can, we'll revisit this on December the fourteenth with the background information that will be presented with at that time. Anything else, uh, in regard to, uh, the utility commission appointment? Uh, PPA study.
Can I ask a crazy question?
You may, Councilman Bennett.
What is the necessity of us studying the budget for the purpose of the PPA if we?
If we're going to get a committee.
I think, I think that's a very valid question, and one that we should think about, because if we establish this, uh, utility commission, it will resolve that issue.
Well, we're doing the work we created them to do.
Right.
We don't, we don't need a commission.
We, we're advising people that are gonna have business backgrounds to look at this thing, and as I read this thing, and I read it again this afternoon, I guess you've already just studied that the city paid several thousand dollars to do, and in that, every, every soul it says that you need to look at this thing annually, you need to review annually, you need to make sure you're doing this. Well, you know, we, we're involved with doing city business here, and sometimes it gets a long way away from anything that has to do with what we're paying for utility rates, but this commission, that's all they would have to do, so then they could bring those up to us, and, uh, and it would better serve the citizens of the town, I'm sure. I mean, it's, it's a good thing.
I do too.
So, yes, if, uh, if we indeed do that, uh, it would negate the need for a PPA study, but it's the council's pleasure, the chair is here to just run the meeting.
I do think we need a PPA study tonight.
No.
If everybody's in favor of that, we'll, uh, dismiss that then from the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, then, uh.
Hey.
We'll, we'll wrap that into the utility commission, and that will be resolved somewhat on the fourteenth. Uh, I'll have several more names to present to you at that time, and, uh, we'll move forward then on our gun control legislation at the next meeting, so, uh, we'll review that and see how that's coming, and, uh, I don't have a, an agenda here for, uh, the city council, but does anybody have anything before we go into executive session?
I do.
Yes. Councilman Carpenter.
I have been studying salaries of each one who draws a salary from the city, and I think that our police officers are really underpaid for the risk that they take. They put their lives on the line every day that they work. I think we should find some way to up their pay.
Let me, let me, uh, say that we, we've got some additional monies in the budget now, because we have been, uh, we, we haven't been paying a chief salary. So, uh, and, and now we've got another position to fill, and we're gonna be filling that position hopefully before long. However, uh, that being said, I, I think the, our, our chief that resigned, uh, had indicated to me that at the end of their training session, which is approximately a year, that they would receive a raise. Now, our city policemen, uh, are paid commensurate with what they do, uh, and we have some extra monies in the budget, and I would say that I know that we have a moratorium on, on raises.
Can I just interject real quick? If, if we're gonna talk generally about the raises in general with the officers, I think that's fine, but if we're gonna talk about individual officers and who gets a raise and who doesn't, it probably should go in closed session.
Well, I don't think we're gonna do that.
I was just saying.
I'm not saying you are, I'm just.
Right, I was just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
In general, yeah.
No, and, and I didn't mean to.
Just something that.
Select one and point that out, no, I did, here, here's, here's a contention, I'll clarify my, my intention, uh, is to just say that the police department in, in general, and especially these new hires that we had that have been there just recently a year, uh, were promised, uh, prior to, uh, our, this council sitting, that there would be a raise at the end of that training period, which has come up.
Mm-huh.
So, uh, you know, the chair would entertain a motion, if, if you wanna give them a dollar raise on their salary, then I think that would be very appropriate, or.
Are those?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
As long as it's across the board.
Is there, uh, things in place that, that depicts when they would earn raises? So if.
There is.
If our policy says that they get a raise upon the completion of their probation period, or this step, or that step, they should just automatically get that raise. I don't think we need to vote to, to give them a raise that, that has already got provisions in our policies and procedure manual to.
Very, very, uh, very well put, Mr. Bennett. However, we have a moratorium on raises for, for this calendar year. In this budget, we have said that we would not be giving raises, and we haven't.
But I think this is something that we should consider, because, like I said, we are not going to keep quality police officers with what we pay them.
Agreed, agreed.
I think, I, I agree completely, I think the same applies across the board for the sake of comparing salaries. We've, we've been down this road a hundred times, I think, I think there's justification in, in most all of our positions as being underpaid, if you looked at the Missouri Municipal League studies or other wage comparisons that we've had. So I, I'm for the officers, uh, getting, uh, a, a raise as long as it can be found in the budget. I would caution that just because there's a little bit of leeway in the budget because of the vacated positions this year, that was a temporary thing, and next year, that, that means we're still gonna have to find that difference in money somehow, because.
Exactly, but if I don't bring it up, we're not gonna be considering it, and I think it.
That's great, that's great.
I think if there's anybody that is not making the wage that, that our policy and procedures specify, then they need to be brought up to that point. So if there's officers that hadn't got the raises they were promised because of this moratorium, then they, they need to be given those raises.
Absolutely.
I guess, I guess I may have been a little, uh, confused with that when we decided no raises, um, with the budget, I thought that was overall salaries when we go across the board, I didn't think that had anything to do with the steps that are in place.
Exactly.
Is this just going in compliance with what they were supposed to get? Why don't you just have some more?
It's not a raise, that's, they've met the requirement to move on to the next step, that's not that way.
The police department needs to give them raises as to what, what they will have got before the moratorium.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, it's not, I'm too prepared. Oh, there you go.
That was just his suggestion.
Very good, um, Sam, I mean, you, you want to present this, or I can? Okay.
It's, it's not in our, that's a suggestion.
These are not. Okay, here, here are some suggestions that, uh, Sergeant Scott has presented to us, starting paid all to three years, uh, twelve fifty, uh, with a raise to thirteen after ninety days probationary period. Uh, if you had three, three years experience, am I reading this?
Zero, three years, somebody with zero to three years experience.
Right, if, if this officer comes to us with, with zero to three years experience, um, and I'm wondering how that, uh, Scott, how, how would that reflect our present city ordinances?
Our city ordinances?
Yes.
Well, I don't know what the ordinance says about that, I don't know on policy and procedure manuals, I, I've looked in the manuals, and there's not any policy for giving these raises.
Okay, all right.
At least all.
And I've read that policy and procedure manual a couple of times, I don't recall that either.
Yeah, I, I've written.
Not, not a pay schedule.
I found there, there is no schedule or, or any raises.
Uh, th- these are suggestions, and I'll read the rest of them here, because there's no names attached to it, he just, this suggestions, is starting, uh, starting pay for three to seven years experience would be thirteen fifty with a raise to fourteen dollars after the ninety-day probationary period. The policy and procedure does cover the, the probationary period. Uh, starting pay with, uh, seven years up, fourteen fifty with a raise to fifteen dollars at ninety-day probationary period. Uh, sergeant pay fifteen dollars with a raise to fifteen fifty at ninety-day probationary period. Uh, fifty cent raise each. Fifty cent raise each year until top pay for parole, patrolman of sixteen dollars and for sergeant seventeen fifty. Chief pay, of course, is set by the City Council.
Could I get a copy of that?
Uh, yes, you may.
I think that would drastically change the budget so much. I mean, I think we're, I think we need to not enact this without-
No, I'm just bringing it up so we can start thinking.
At this time, there are no, there are very few officers here that that would make very much a raise to.
Right, but the, the intent is to replace all of the officers.
No, the intent is not, the intent is to keep those officers.
Yes.
The intent, the intent is to give those officers a reason to stay.
Exactly.
Sure.
Right.
Right now, I, I-
I'm aware that most of them are in the middle of an exodus, so that's what I'm saying is, is that we're gonna replace anybody that leaves and, and it will affect, just as the chief position is vacant.
Yes.
It's saved us some money in the budget, not because we've increased revenue in that line item, just because we've had a temporary situation.
I have a question. How often do we get experienced officers?
My understanding, it's been a rare thing in the city for a long time.
Exactly, my point.
We, we get mostly fresh out of the academy.
Yeah.
We, we have a comment from the-
Now, just to put those numbers in perspective, one of my sons was hired as a police officer in another community about two years ago, and his starting pay, now, he had not wanted to be captain. They sent him to the academy, they paid for the academy, they provided him a vehicle to drive to and from the academy, and he just paid about nineteen dollars.
Yes.
Okay, and would you share with us, is it close to our city?
No, it, it's in rural Kansas, though.
Kansas, okay, so that's, that's not Apple's apple, brother.
If I can explain the way I came-
But I understand, I understand what you're saying.
The way I came up with these numbers was I actually called around to all the agencies within about thirty miles, forty miles radius of here of similar sizes and found out what their pay is.
What they're doing.
This, this would put us right in the ballpark of-
It would actually put us a little under it, but it would be at least, it would at least then be competitive. It would still be starting before the end of June.
I can make copies, I'll make copies for everybody.
Alright.
You are making copies?
I will make copies for me, yeah.
Then, I, Councilman Carpenter, that was, I'm glad you brought that up. I had intended to neglect it to do that, I'm glad you did. So-
In the meantime, we have officers that were, were, were brought in at twelve fifty and promised a raise at the end of their probationary period.
They were actually brought in at eleven seventy-five, I'm running twelve twenty-five right now.
Why, if the starting is twelve fifty?
Because, because whenever, whenever they started, that wasn't what they was. When they started, they were paid eleven seventy-five and given fifty cent raise.
That is ridiculous.
They're currently making twelve twenty-five.
That's ridiculous.
Any, any further questions? We might say that we're seriously considering this. It's a serious consideration of the council's at this time.
Do we, do we have any that are currently in their probationary period?
No. I am assuming we will shortly because, as you know, I, we've had one officer resign, his last day is gonna be in about a week and a half. And then we'll be down to just three of us, so we will be having to get another officer if ever that's yet, and he will be in the probationary period, obviously.
While, while we're not going to grossly enact this proposal as a whole tonight, I, I would, I would be in favor of elevating those officers' hourly wage at this time effective immediately.
Do you like to make a motion, Councilman Bennett?
All the ones that have been promised that anyway.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you like, uh, the chair would like to see a dollar amount put on that, Mr., Councilman Bennett?
I, uh, just, just in conformity with, with these numbers that you've presented to us, I don't-
Twelve fifty.
I don't know, what are they, twelve twenty-five, what was they promised?
Well, I believe that they were told it would get approximately fourteen dollars an hour a year. And then when I put them there, it's still not quite gonna be that high.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the officers remaining who have completed their probationary period salary or hourly wage be thirteen dollars an hour.
I'll second it.
And then we can, we can move forward with figuring out the rest of this proposal.
We'll have to-
At least show that we intend to be fair and take care of our employees.
We'll have to find a continuing amount of money to supply that, but, but I, I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think the city owes it to the, these folks. So, so we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So they're gonna be making thirteen, what?
Thirteen an hour.
Thirteen dollars an hour.
The, the two officers that are here will be-
You can go to the steel plant and the wells.
Oh, yeah, I'm telling you.
They'll nearly take anybody that can walk through the door.
Not being dangerous, well, not that much dangerous.
And I, don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of paying them more than that, but, but responsibly until we find budgetary allowances, I think thirteen's an appropriate starting point.
Yep.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I just wanna make sure I understand. So the, the two officers, or they're gonna be, their salary will change to thirteen dollars.
Yes.
And whoever's coming in will start the budget.
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure you know what to tell people.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Scott, thank you, Scott. If, no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, I, I know that-
We're on roll, should get my list back out.
We're, we're gonna move to executive session here now. Clifford, the, this session, it did not answer your question, but the next que, the next session should. You should see a revision in our present ordinance, and it should be affected at our next meeting. We've asked for some further background information, so please come back, and it should be forthcoming.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of things.
Appreciate it, I did my information down about some of the other things, uh, from what he said, because I've got the information, I can't state quote exactly, but I've got it down. I'll get the information.
Okay, alright, appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, yes, Councilman Chris?
Raymond Kingery wants to know if the city could help him clean the fence up, kind of, I think it's across the corner he lives now. I think it's half on the city.
Who, who is it, Nathan?
We share the property. It'd be right behind me, Mayor. Raymond Kingery lives even further south, but that city property right behind me.
Oh, that's city property, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
But, but just to the south of it is a rental property, property of his. Is that, I'm assuming he's talking about behind that trailer, kinda behind Heath's along the-
I just wanna know, just the city could help him.
Yeah, well, tell, tell them they can cut all the weeds on the city side of the fence, but anything on-
Is, is there a fence there?
On the councilman's side, we can't cut.
Yeah, I think they'll, yeah.
I don't know what that would look like.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure.
It would be, it would be really of no benefit to us, but it is our property.
If it's a lawn fence, it's just as much one.
Exactly.
You know, it's just a neighbor.
Clean it out and maybe spray, spray it next spring.
Is it, is it a lot of brush, like, gonna need chainsaw or tear the fence out and brush hog it?
He just said help him clean it out. I just took like it's maybe some small brush and maybe weeds, I don't think they like anything, we'd have to have a chainsaw. No trees, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something that Sam can take care of.
Labor-intensive deal with it of some sort.
Anything else before we move into executive session?
On Thurlafer and Mahaffey, I can't-
Mac Mahan.
Or Mac Mahan, yeah. The gentleman that bought Lee Benley's house, he says that's so narrow where you turn there, you can't make a turn there. He wonders if that could be widened.
That street?
Well, just where you turn, off the street.
The corner?
That corner.
Just the intersection there in the approach?
Thurlafer and what?
Mac Mahan, yeah.
I would, I would say not, because the, the street perimeter's pretty well set, I guess.
Man, I'd take the truck down through there.
So I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know that-
Sam might check it out and maybe see.
Yeah, if you-
Ten more might be.
Take it over a ride, Jim, show him how to fit that corner.
Yeah.
Anything else before we move into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we would take a short break and enter into executive session.
Second. Motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, or we'll hear a roll call.
Yes, roll call.
Roll call, folks, please.
Freddie Bennett?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Danny and Chris?
Yes. And Ashley? Yes.
Okay. Regular session is dismissed.
I've got one.
Did you get one? What is it? Oh, yeah, you forgot to read that. Well, you can read it in close. You can read it in close session. Well, you're welcome. Hi. I decided I'm coming, I'm waiting for you.
I didn't like it. I'm sure you're passionate, but you mark up what you, you know, what worries me.
I think, I don't feel like you're concerned using acronym.
You're gonna keep going. I'm gonna give them a hard time.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think it's ludicrous, I've been looking at that for a long time, and I thought, something's gotta be done.
I don't care, I mean, if we wanna make the department thing, my guess is it just needs to be six within just not seven days, or you openly carry a firearm, so long as you have whatever the permit's called.
And you are?
Dale underwood.